Forty-five, so I'll call the public hearing to order. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive input on Orders 547, which amends the City Council Code, City of Newcastle Code, Chapter 193 regarding the composition of the Board of Health. And we have with us tonight Deputy Lieutenant Gallagher, who's the Chair, and she's going to tell us a bit about why the commission requested this change.
Thank you. Do I need to?
If I help, if you stand up so everybody can hear you.
Yeah, I'm gonna stand by Jen here. Thank you. The Board of Health kind of reviewed our mandates based on the city code, and we really felt that the requirement in there for a licensed physician was not in keeping with kind of where healthcare is at this point. There's a broad variety of professions and backgrounds that can really add to a board of health, and they're not all physicians. And in fact, some physicians, I pick on orthopedic surgeons. I love my orthopedic surgeon, but, you know, they don't have a lot of background in community health, like a family practice physician, like Dr. Bechtel, for example, or Joe, Dr. Joe Viola. You know, we've had an embarrassment of riches, actually, on our Board of Health the last year or two, because we've had two physicians and two nurses. But life isn't always going to be that way, you know? We are a changing community. We don't have as many doctors in the community as we used to. So it's gonna be, our concern was that it will be harder in the future to come up with a, potentially, a physician who wants to be on the board. And we think we can get really good quality by making that a little broader and allowing people like, and I have a list here. Some examples include, but not limited to, obviously, still physicians, nurses, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, EMTs, individuals with masters or doctoral degrees in public health, individuals with background and experience, experience and education in environmental health. So I, we talked about it in the Board of Health, and I went back and wrote something up, and the next time we met, I proposed that at least one member shall have education experience in healthcare or community, public health, and then gave those examples. The group discussed it and felt that it should be two members. We didn't want to say anymore, because we think there's also value in just having the general public, people from the general public, be on the board as well. So that's kind of where we are coming from.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there any public comment on this? Okay, well, someone else may come in, because the public hearing goes until seven, so I'm afraid we just have to wait. For those just arriving or receiving public comments on the proposed change to the Board of Health composition, to no longer require a physician, but require two, people with experience in health, like nurses, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, EMTs, people with experience in public health, et cetera. So if anyone has any comments, we're receiving them until seven. Same rules for comments here, as for regular meeting, three minutes, state your name, and place of residence.
Phil Gross, thirteen oh one thirteen three. I think it makes perfectly good sense. You have people that are in that industry or in those specialties, so that instead of just someone from somewhere appointing someone, and they say, "Oh, well, I know how to put on a band-aid." At least you'll be able to bet who it is. And I assume they will apply like any?
They'd be appointed like anyone else, but the current law requires a licensed physician. And removing that and replacing it with requiring two of the members in order to be in the healthcare profession, with the number of employees possible, nurse, practitioner, EMT, et cetera.
So as far as who would appoint?
It's, that doesn't change. It's appointed by council, I believe.
Okay, so as a group mayor?
Mayor with a group of, by council. We're not changing that structure at all, simply who is, that we no longer require licensed.
But it's more than one, just one person appointing someone?
Right, that, that part stays the same.
Okay, but yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I've been doing it for twenty years. And I did it. It's only just my education. It's like a paramedic is, it's like if you were.
Yeah, right.
It is a busy, you know, it's very, you know, on holidays, no one wants to go to hospital, so they don't call. And then, and then on these really, really hot days, we not get this many. Yesterday, we had like nine calls, but half of them didn't mean paramedics. They were, I have a call. I was wondering.
Suzanne.
Did you go?
I normally go on Wednesday, but this canceled.
The heat, right?
I didn't play tennis. For me, the nine fifteen wasn't a good time.
Read the newspaper?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So move?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And public hearing on Orders 547 is adjourned? And is there a chance to make some changes and never open the regular meeting? I'm ready. Okay. Let's begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
You have this word, please. Counselperson to Nancy Souttar.
Here.
Counselperson to Dave.
Here.
Counselperson to Andrew Zell.
Here.
Counselperson to Brian Maddow.
Here.
Counselperson to Baca has not joined the meeting yet. But he plans to, I guess.
And he is, yes.
Okay. Also President, Mayor Valerie Leary, City Administrator Antonina Tantillo, City Treasurer James Wisman, City Solicitor Max Walton, City Building Official Jeffrey Berstrom, and City Chief of Police Richard Cane. Thank you. So the first item of business is the minutes. We have quite a few. We have minutes of, we'll take them one at a time. The special meeting executive session on June third. Is there a motion to approve these minutes as submitted?
So move.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next seven minutes is from the special meeting on June third. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes? I was not at that meeting, but I do have a question about page, what is it, one, two, three, second paragraph. It says, "Counselperson to Baca stated that counsel will be meeting with the Secretary of State to discuss citywide traffic issues." I think it was the Secretary of Delta, but since I wasn't here, I'm not sure. I thought I'd ask.
Secretary of Delta.
It was Delta, okay. So with that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second?
Second, and then all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The next is another special meeting executive session on June ten. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes approved. And then the minutes of the budget workshop on June tenth.
Motion approved.
And the other, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I think finally, no, not finally, but minutes of the regular meeting of Ju, of May fourteenth. Are there any corrections or additions, or corrections or additions to these minutes?
Motion, oh, sorry.
I have one question. On the first page at the bottom, in the city administrator's report about the code enforcement officer. It says the new code enforcement officer will begin this month, which would have been June, and I don't think we ever expected the person to report until July. So just changed to July. Okay, now, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor of approving minutes as submitted with corrections? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we have Tuesday, June eighteenth, special meeting with executive session. A motion to approve?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then there's the budget workshop of June eighteen. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? A motion to approve?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then there was, next to the last one, a special meeting, an executive session on the twenty-sixth of June. A motion to approve?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, and then, well, this is the same day, the budget workshop of June twenty-sixth. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I have a chair.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, on backtrack, sorry. To the special meeting of June twenty-sixth, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Now, the minutes of the budget workshop of June twenty-sixth, any additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
All in favor of approving them as submitted?
Aye.
All right, last one. The budget workshop of June twenty-seven. Are there any additions or corrections? A motion to approve?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved as submitted. Thank you all. Okay, the next item is the treasurer's report. Mr. Wisman?
Thank you. This is as of June thirtieth, which happens to, also, we are a year in. At June thirtieth, we had total cash in bank accounts of eleven million oh fifty-five. I think that is both in the bank account and investments. Of that, the unrestricted funds were eight million eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. The restricted funds were two million one eighty-one, bringing it to a total of eleven million oh fifty-five. Now, with that said, the June thirtieth financial report, which, since the year is complete, these are final numbers. The total revenues that we had are six million two hundred forty-five thousand two hundred and thirty, and our expenses were six million eighty, six million eighty thousand six ninety-nine. So we had a positive number of a hundred and sixty-four thousand five thirty-one for the year.
Are there any questions from counsel for Mr. Wisman? A motion to approve the minutes, subject to, the treasurer's report, subject to audit?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we have the report from the city administrator.
Thank you. So the month of June was quite busy, as everyone knows. We approved our budget and our collective bargaining agreement this month. The flooding period, as we mentioned at the last meeting, is still being worked on by the contractor to be reviewed by our engineer. And expected dates for test paddling, or driving of the test paddles, is to be announced by the contractor. So more details should come in August. Our new code enforcement officer will begin this month. We have received notice that we will receive bond bill funds for this year for both street projects and sidewalk upgrades, which includes Cherry Street and the Fifth Street sidewalk, Founder Street between Third and Fourth Streets, West Tenth Street from Washington to Kinne's Way, and the curves along the Gas Line Project. We also received funds for the Battery Park Playground and the place department renovations. So thank you to our senators and representatives who funded those items for us. We have worked on a grant, or I'm sorry, an application to apply to be a bike-friendly city with the League of American Bicycleists during the month, in collaboration with their outreach coordinator. We have been invited to apply for the full ORPT grant through Denrick for the Battery Park Phase Two. We have also received word that the city has been named a Best Place for a Picnic Upstate by Delaware Today in the 2024 Best of Delaware Board. So that's very exciting news for us. We have applied for and received notice that the city has been awarded a 2024 Delaware Urban and Community Forestry Council and Delaware Forest Service Preplanting Proposal Grant in the amount of five thousand dollars with the Playground Committee for Playground Landscaping at Battery Park. So more details and planning on those items are to come. These are just updates for the month of June.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief of Dave?
Good evening. I've been in Beasley all day, so I apologize for my casual look, but it was, it was helpful in this heat. I just, a couple of things. Our report got in a little late again. We're having some issues with our database. Hopefully, this is the last time we deal with that. But it'll be on the website for the next day or two. A couple of things to report, some in June, some most recently. But there have been a series of thefts from motor vehicle and thefts of vehicle in the Shawtown area. I think we were up to like six thefts from motor vehicles. The common denominator are, are folks that are just pulling on car door handles, and if they're open, they're going to rummage through the car. So a couple of things we want to encourage our folks to do is, one, lock your car. But two, if you have some Ring cameras or, or anything like that, and you're in this area, we've, we've shared with you a link on our Facebook page where you can actually upload these videos, and it'll go right into our evidence system. If you think you're in the area of, of any of these locations where these thefts take place, you know, you may or may not have anything on there, but it's helpful to at least have that video. If you see something, please call 911. Don't call the station, don't call the non-emergency number. If it's a middle of night, you see something you don't like, 911's the way to go. We can get there and then determine whether or not it's, you know, anything important. We've investigated a couple of burglaries this month. One was at the, on the twenty-fourth, around three in the morning, at the, a business within, inside River Plaza, it was very cut off. Two employees who were actually in the rear of the store in a room heard a glass break, went out to find several people breaking into their store. They called 911. We got there, the suspects had fled, but our investigative unit has identified some suspects and warrants are on file right now, so we hope to have an arrest to clear that shortly. You may have seen this on our Facebook page. There's, this is kind of happening everywhere. But some of the Flex drivers that you recognize from Amazon, they have the vests. It looks like there may be somebody impersonating a Flex driver with an Amazon vest, and they're stealing packages. We've had one incident in the city. We thought we had a few leads, but we followed up on them, and they were definitely not our suspects, but we're continuing to look into that. Again, we're lucky, we've only got one victim to this point that we know of. So some other jurisdictions are, are dealing with a larger volume of that. We had another firearm arrest, Fifth Defense DUI. One of our officers recognized some, some erratic driving, conducted a traffic stop, found the operator beyond the influence. It was a fifth DUI, was also a possession of a loaded firearm. He was a person prohibited, and so that arrest was made. On a, on a good note, the lend a hand, save a life class, I think some folks in here attended that. We hadn't done that in a little while. Had a pretty good showing. I think we're going to try to do this again. Again, it encourages folks to get involved with, to intervene when they see something wrong. You're not getting a CPR certification. You're just getting the confidence to be able to intervene long enough till help gets there. So again, it's a successful class, and we appreciate those that participated. On the twenty-fourth, I hope to send this invite out to, to counsel and to the city administrator. DPAC has scheduled a meeting where they're going to award, hopefully, we think we've passed this, but award this agency with its re-accreditation. There'll be several agencies there, so I can send the invite. You have the option to either attend in person or via Teams. That would be on the twenty-fourth at 2:00 PM, and it's an odd time, I get. Typically, for your first accreditation, we like to make a, a little bit of a deal. We, we had a, you know, we scheduled something in the middle of the day. In this case, it's going to be at Homeland Security or the DPAC building for this. So again, I'll get that invite out to counsel if you're interested. If you could let me know within the next week or so, so I can let DPAC know. And that's all I have.
Any questions from counsel?
I just have one. So I was looking through the report, and I see your priority one calls for service for June 2024. It says, I mean, there's only thirty-four total incidents. Twenty of them were, were domestics?
So there are, there are several, several of these that are not in our jurisdictions. This traps all the time, yes. We do, that is pretty common. So, and it could be a domestic report. It may not necessarily be a domestic incident where we made an arrest. It could be a verbal argument, but it's classified.
But you don't see it as, like, there's a couple of incidents where a couple addresses driving the numbers up. This is kind of widespread then, you think?
No, we do have, we do have, you know, this callous way of describing has been frequent flyers. We do have those that are repeat offenders, for sure.
Just kind of sticks out.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you.
Communications from counsel. Let's start. Mr. Battaway?
She'll worry because I would just let you, Counselperson to Baca is on.
Oh, okay. Is he able to speak to us?
Yeah, he can. But if Counselperson Battaway would...
Go ahead, then we'll come back.
Yeah, I just wanted to note it, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to say how thankful I am. I know that many of us here feel the same way in respect to the show of force that was shown by the Goodwill Fire Department and their network of flames and first responders a few weeks ago when there was a fire on Delaware Street at Norley's. Norley's is currently closed as a result of the fire. No one was hurt. I'm personally looking forward to them reopening. And I already know that I'm going to be ordering some concrested crab bits as soon as they are ready. As our city administrator mentioned, Battery Park was recognized by Delaware Today, which is a great acknowledgement for the city. But I also would like to say and acknowledge the coordination between the city and the trustees to ensure that Battery Park is the gem of our city. And I'd like to give a special acknowledgement to Ms. Lynn, who works out there daily, all year round, at Battery Park. It's a special place. And then finally, I would like to acknowledge the life and death of a friend from Shawtown. His name was Danny Plumlee Senior. He was not a, a perfect man by any means. He was a lifelong resident of the city. He lived in Shawtown. He was a graduate of William Penn High School. He truly loved the city to its core. He was not, you know, in the Goodwill Fire Department. He was not on the committee. He was just an average Joe. An average Joe that just loved himself some Newcastle. And honestly, he probably loved it a little bit too much, because as he got older in life and he had some health ailments, he couldn't... he couldn't manage the stairs in his house. He would fall a lot, and it would cause him difficulty. But he just couldn't leave Newcastle. So I would like to let Danny know wherever he is, I know he's looking down, that I'm going to miss him. But at the same point, I would like to give a public service announcement to any person out there that has an interest in bringing some senior level, low-impact living communities to our city. It is something that we need. Unfortunately, I've known and seen too many people that have had to leave this place because of their failing health, and that is not community. And so I would like to see a facility or community of such, and we'll be working to try to advocate for that here. Thank you, council president.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Battaway. Mr. Zell?
I don't know if anyone came out this past Saturday. We had the market, the green there. It was an amazing event. We had quite a few vendors. If you like bread, come on out. The bread was absolutely amazing. We had fresh vegetables, great turnout. I'll ask council, they need help for front desk there, helping out this coming Saturday. So if you want to help out, let John Reeves and Fee Price know. As well as from Delaware Events, they assisted in pulling this together. The guy's name is Keenan Jones. He helped pull a bunch of vendors and help organize this. So great job by all of them. So come on and help. Just another thing now, I've been helping out with Meals on the Wheels right now for, actually many years, through New Art, and I'm now doing here in Newcastle, in our town. So if you're interested in doing Meals on Wheels, they always need people. Takes about an hour and a half on a day to go out and deliver meals to the elderly or to whoever is in need. So please let me know, and I can get you connected.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Day?
Hey, just a few things. So as you can see, the AV equipment is installed. The electrical work was done behind it. Pro Works has to come back and actually tie the screen in. And then they got to adjust the receptacle for the projector. But that should be done in the next few days. We'll have this project wrapped up. I did distribute the mobile stage specs to the council members. And if anybody has any questions, please bring them up. Because at some point in the next month or so, I would definitely like to get that order so we can get it hopefully in time for our events next year. It's a six-month delivery time. At one of the last meetings, one of our constituents stood up and was talking about 625 West Seventh Street, which is the Foundry at Riverview Project. And that is a small apartment building down on Seventh Street. It was the asphalt area where for years they parked overflow cars. But there were some, you know, back and forth. But I kind of wanted, I did the research, and I wanted to kind of clear the air. So that site is not a superfund site. So it's not a superfund site. But I have been in contact with Patrick Betcher of Denrec. The investigation report on that site has not been completed. However, they are enrolled in Denrec's voluntary cleanup program. And a geotechnical engineer had submitted a request to perform construction activities at the site and is conducting a remedial investigation of the site. So the construction activities were reviewed and approved by Denrec. And that was to install the silt fence, install the construction entrance, remove the existing asphalt, and replacement of stone dust. So all that's done down there, all those construction improvements have been done. But I wanted everybody to know, you know, when you come up here and you say, you know what I mean, or have questions, we do try and research and answer them. So I have been in constant contact with Denrec. When they get the investigation report, they're going to send it to me so we can keep aware of what's going on. But I kind of at least wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. I'm hoping that at some point in the next couple of meetings, we'll have the update on the land development plans that are approved. And I heard you say earlier that the code enforcement officer will start this month. There a certain date this month?
We're hoping next week.
Okay, okay. The other thing that we had talked about and put in the budget was portable bike rack. There is a lot of interest in the community and in council, I believe, that we have a portable bike rack, and we actually use it not on sidewalks, but in parking spaces. And we may even move it around the city or place it close to events that we have to make it a little bit more user-friendly for the bikers. But I did want to bring that up tonight. The only other thing that I have is that, as everybody heard with the number of approvals that we needed to do for minutes, we've had 11 special meetings since the beginning of May. So it's been a busy couple of months. But I think we've managed to do everything that we've needed to do. And I would like to thank my fellow council members and the administration and the mayor and treasurer for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I have two questions, Mr. Day. In terms of the AV system, with the mics, that's part of what's not quite ready yet?
So what we've purchased here was a system for presentations. So that they can tie into the system for the screen and the projector. I don't know that there was any, there's no speakers or microphones or anything. It was just presentation material. But with that said, I've heard loud and clear in the past few weeks that people think we need to have microphones here. So we will definitely look into that, see where we're at with funding.
Okay. And then in terms of the bikes, bike racks, I mean, I think that we can perhaps have a brief discussion and maybe approve a pilot project since the funding's been approved with bike racks and the type of bike racks we're talking about are not expensive. We're talking a few hundred dollars. And do a pilot program of putting, taking a, a single parking space on Delaware Street between Fourth and Fifth, because there are a number of businesses in that area. The library is there, the post office is just across the street. So if we put a bike rack in that block, then that would be something people could use to access all of those things. And so what I'm looking for is input from council as a pilot, do we want to proceed with that? Obviously, we'd have to work out the details, make sure the bike racks were the appropriate size and that they wouldn't impede traffic. And, you know, we'd have to work out some details. But what we're looking for tonight is, do we want to authorize a pilot program to purchase either one larger or two smaller bike racks, depending on which configuration would work best in a parking space as a pilot at that location, with the understanding that they can be moved elsewhere, either temporarily for special events or long-term if that doesn't work out?
I'd like to see us authorized for one bike rack. But I think we need to make sure, like you said, about length. I think we're probably only looking at a bike rack that feeds into one side. But I think we need to work out those details. But I absolutely think we should authorize one bike rack.
Yeah, I think you can either get a large one that holds 10, or smaller ones that hold five or five. And two smaller ones might actually provide more parking space for bikes without, and fit better in the space. That's what we'd have to figure out.
Yep.
As you mentioned, council president, this is something that was discussed in budgetary meetings. And I'm in full support of going toward that pilot program. In respect to that, I think it would behoove us, when we get to the point of foreputting it down, that we send out notices to residents and door businesses in that block, in that area, just making them aware for those purposes. Just this past weekend and other times, I've seen bikes in places maybe where they shouldn't be. I've seen people literally tie bikes around the Newcastle Library sign. That's all that recently, this past weekend. And also out in front of some businesses, like literally out front of their door. People can't even get outside their door. So it definitely seems like there's a need for that. And I appreciate council for taking the time and consideration to work it out.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? So Mr. Sabaka is joining us remotely from his, he's away with his family. Perhaps that's a lead into your comments. First, if first you could make any you have on this bike issue, and then any other council, or any other issues you wish to bring to our attention.
Thank you. Council president, can everybody hear me right now?
Yeah, a little bit, please. A little bit.
Okay.
New technology.
And fuel and, uh, virtually, as a way to bike racks, I'm in full support of having multiple bike racks around the city and, you know, making that connection between the trail and, you know, ability to park it and come to town and not have to walk, you know, off of these street vehicles and travel through the city. So I'll be, I'm happy with the plan, pardon me, you know. Help me decide though, bike racks are more practical, or by that it's more complicated. The language is, so we might not have many choices, but I will also point out, um, bike racks. I want to thank Joe for getting updated on the Center of Southern Street. We just, I think it was updates. If you use Joe until we have the study completed, I'm going to, you know, talk to you. I'll look into this as well. With the city administrator, so Mrs. Gray, who's been given the assignment. And thank you, Joe, as well, so councilors today for, you know, here afterwards for mobile stage and the technology, it's great to see that we're able to use this technology for, you know, events being able to mobile stage for the next summer, and perhaps in the spring coming up. I wanted to, I think, except for everybody who have played part in organizing and the Saturday market. I think it's a great initiative, and it's great to see locals and businesses, you know, a couple of examples, also local businesses, you know, I love having another platform to promote. It sells, and, you know, just have that, have it good, connect with more customers. I don't know what, as you were saying, it's kind of a hard decision. I haven't, I said, I want to pay some company, you know, the old people is all about that. So maybe you guys will bear to that as well, how to be customer members and all the staff. And see for, you know, important things that we were able to, you know, have some success with, which is a positive, I think, so, so those are just great things to happen. I have just two updates, and those are, that will be at my notes. So I want to just, hello, and on July 27th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Newcastle Elementary School, my note, it's Community Day organized by Coach B's Kids. It's a basketball program for kids starting from age three through eighteen. And Coach B is organizing, I believe, our police is already there, site helping out with security. And I hope that City doesn't have, you know, a lot of tables, you know, information most of them perhaps have been fired and joined, you know, with some administrations. But it's amazing, it's Community Day, but I mean, I know a lot of it, you know, families fund, organized for kids, bouncy houses, a lot of new surprises. There's a lot of people wearing, you know, shoes, security services donated, some other, you know, or really stuff that probably would be excited about shirts and stuff. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, maybe, councilperson Battaway chose to meet at Coach B last Tuesday, who had talked about potential annual basketball tournament for kids of ages seven or nine and ten. So, you know, another event we had, even this year, at the organ, all of this. I also should reach out to our city administrator, so we can coordinate with trustees and CLOs to be back for the local start process and, you know, get a fully, but then if they're together now, to have some school, everybody's right to go to school for this kid and the family, you know, just have a number, remember, in Newcastle. So if anybody has questions, please reach out to me or councilperson Battaway. We'd be happy to, you know, provide more details and, you know. Those are my, obviously, thank you, council president.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from the mayor?
I'm just going to sit here, it's really too hot to move around. I really, having been served on council myself...
Thanks, Mary.
Yes, thank you.
Having served on council myself for six years, I have full appreciation and regard for this current council, who has had numerous meetings over this last year for the hiring of a new city administrator and for this budget. And I have not counted the meetings, but 11 is what I hear Joe say. So I give you all kudos for the work that you have got above and beyond for. It's been a tough year, and tough decisions had to be made, and I congratulate you all for them. I know that the Goodwill Fire Company and their associates were mentioned for the fire at Norarlees. And indeed, it was, it was actually kind of heartwarming that when most of the firefighters exited from the back of Norarlees, everyone standing on the street applauded. And, you know, that was a really good warming community response. And I appreciate all of them who were out there, especially in turnout gear, and it's pretty hot. So the market on the green, I wasn't able to attend. I heard great things about it, and I'm looking forward to it every Saturday. And I'll be volunteering this Saturday myself. I attended the For Casimir dedication down there in Bull Hill and gave welcome and remarks on June 20th, and it was a great turnout in spite of the heat. And I look forward to further attention to the area and what history we may be able to establish there. I also gave the welcome and remarks at the Love Freedom Ring Ceremony at Emmanuel on July 4th. It was, church was packed, and that was the first time I'd seen so many people for that event. And it's a good event to turn out to. National Night Out on August 6th is upcoming. We're going to feature displays and activities from the Newcastle City Police Department, the Goodwill Fire Company, the Newcastle Courthouse Museum. Hot dogs and chips are being cooked and provided by the Lions Club. There'll be additional fire and law enforcement activities. And we're going to have an inflatable basketball. And we are returning with the Dunk Tank. So I will need some volunteers for the Dunk Tank. We've got Paul Freeberry from American Pie Entertainment, who'll be our DJ. There'll be other local nonprofits involved with tables. Some of our schools in the area have this academy, hopefully Newcastle Charter and some others. I want to thank our sponsors thus far. If you put out a call and you get a great response, and I'm so thankful, for the Newcastle Farmer's Market and the Weekly Trans Plus, the St. Anthony's Club. And just today, I heard about Queen and Griffith Funeral Home. So I'm very, very thankful for all those who are sponsoring this event. And just unmark your calendars for Turn the Town's Teal on August 28th around 10 o'clock. We're going to meet and tie the teal ribbons up from the wharf down Delaware Street. And there'll be more information coming out on that. But to please consider coming out to place a ribbon in memory of a loved one who may have passed away from ovarian cancer.
What's the date again?
It is August 28th, it's around 10 o'clock in the morning.
And Wednesday?
It is, I thought it was a Thursday. I'll reconfirm the date and get it back to everyone. I appreciate the bike rack discussions, and I'm glad to see that there will be a pilot program for the bike racks to see how everything works out. So congratulations again to council and to the city staff on the budget process and everything else. So you guys have my admiration.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Are you the first one to dunk tank?
I did not volunteer last time. And I don't know that I'll volunteer this time. But I'll be happy to stand there and take the money that will be donated to a nonprofit that has yet to be decided.
Well, if it's this hot, you might not have a...
I might not have a vote. There might be a lot of people volunteering for the Dunk Tank, just to get ready to go in, so.
Thank you, Mayor. For remarks from the president tonight, I just want to address one issue that came up last month during public comments. And that was about funding for the state bond bill. And also, in the current edition of the Weekly, there was an announcement from Senator Pore about this year's grants. So I thought I'd provide a little background about... So I thought I'd provide a little background about the bond bill, because I know before I was on council, I didn't know much and kind of takes a while because it's a messy project, bus, process. So its official name is the Community Reinvestment Fund. Municipalities and some other organizations in Delaware submit requests each year. Their requests must specify the projects to be completed with these funds and the cost of each project. Originally, most of, when this whole thing started, most of the projects funded through the bond bill were street sidewalk and storm drain repairs, but in recent years, the type of projects funded has been expanded, although the majority, at least from our experience, still tends to be for street work. Um, the funds granted must be used for the specific projects selected by the state legislature. We can't simply put the money in our general fund and spend it as we need it. Each member of the state legislature requests funding for projects in their district and since Newcastle is included in two senatorial and two representative districts, decisions about funding are divided among our four representatives. And once we determine which projects will be submitted, then we communicate with these representatives about our request. Now, since there's only so much money available from the state and most other municipalities also submit requests, obviously no one gets everything they ask for. Um, most of our requests, eighty-one percent of what the amount we requested was for street projects spread across the districts of all four of our representatives. Other items on our list included renovations to our police building and funds for an accessible playground surface in Battery Park. We've just learned that we will receive about half the total amount we requested. This includes forty-two percent of what we requested for street repairs, fifty-six percent of the amount requested for the police building and funding for the accessible playground surface. Now, there are some other sources of funding for, from the state for street repairs, so we may receive additional amounts for some of the projects not funded through the bond bill. So as you can see, this bond bill is, funding is not a simple matter. We communicate our needs to our representatives to make decisions based on that and the priorities that they see for their districts. So we appreciate the hard work of all four of our representatives to get us this funding, which goes to help improve things here in Newcastle. So I thought that might explain that process a little better. Um, and, and, uh, Captain Moore is here from Goodwill.
Um, notice in the package for the, uh, the fire EMS, things kind of like flip flopped a little bit, our EMS, um, went down a little bit where our bars went up, um, so I touched on a few of the incidents, uh, I know that Weekly had a few of them covered, so I'll just touch on them a little bit. Um, we, uh, we had dumpster fire over at, uh, Walgreens, uh, in one of the dumpsters over there, um, so it was, uh, contained just at that point dumpster. Um, uh, bystander, uh, had said that, um, possibly, uh, some kids had lit it, uh, Fire Marshal's Office was notified and, uh, they're doing their investigation, uh, on that. There was mentioned earlier, uh, about Norolees, um, bad incident there, uh, it was an outside fire, it was an, uh, outside, but like a, a storage type, uh, facility underneath the steps, uh, fire was contained to that, it did not get into the building, um, so crews need quick work of that, of that fire. Uh, the other incident was down at, uh, the Back Creek Golf Course in Middletown, uh, we assisted Middletown on the two and one round there, um, that was just a large outbuilding that stored chairs and, uh, that kind of stuff for events, um, that they have for events and all, um, so we, uh, crew worked on that for several hours, you know, with the heat and, um, and all that. Um, the other fire, we assisted Christiana Fire Company on another two and one, uh, fire, it was early in the morning, uh, there was two houses involved, um, the, uh, crews from eighteen, they worked on the exposure house, uh, which would be the house next to the, uh, the original house, um, worked there for about three hours, uh, getting that, uh, getting that under control. Um, the last thing that, uh, that I have is affected yesterday, uh, Terrence Baker, uh, one of our members, uh, he, uh, currently serves as, as an assistant engineer, he was promoted to the rank of captain, um, so, uh, it's definitely well deserved, uh, for him. Um, Captain Baker, uh, will take on the responsibilities of the drivers training program that we have in place and, um, he will also be overseeing the volunteer, the volunteer staffing program that, that we have, so, um, we, we have a schedule so that way we can keep volunteers, uh, that we'll be of coverage, uh, around the clock, if the ambulance is out or something like that, so we can definitely ensure that we get a piece apparatus out and other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Captain Baker.
Excuse me, President, I have a few questions for Captain Moore.
Yes, sir.
In respect to the, um, uh, achievement of the newly appointed captain, is there a ceremony, uh, where this, you owe?
Uh, I, I have not heard if, uh, if there is gonna be one or not, um, if there is, I'll be sure that the chief sends out the, uh, the invitation.
Right.
All right, so the next item is the second reading of ordinance five forty-seven.
I think we got a public comment.
Oh, pardon me, yes, that's not, I missed that. Thank you so much. All right, are there any public comments tonight? Use your rules, say your names, sign in and three notes.
I'm Suzanne Swift, I'm at sixteen West Fourth Street and I'm also the Playground Subcommittee Chair. Wanted to give everybody an update and actually start with a whole lot of thank yous. Um, we were a little down the dumps a couple months ago because we had put in applications for grants and we didn't get them. And I think Max has said to me, they're gonna come, at some point you'll get a grant and sure enough we did. So the first grant that we got for the playground was from the Welfare Foundation for seventy-five thousand dollars. The next one was money allocated by the city of Newcastle, uh, also for seventy-five thousand dollars. And then the bond bill came through for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so the money and the grants have been adding up and this is just a wonderful thing to happen for the kids of our city and for our community in general. We're about halfway to where we need to be to build a really special playground. If you take a look through city records, I challenge you to find the last time we really invested this way in our kids in recreation, in outdoor recreation, so that we can get kids away from their computers, uh, and get them outside running and, and being healthier. So, um, thank you for city council, thank you to Senator Nicole Por, uh, Representative Minor Brown, Senator Brown and Representative Hook. On top of these grants, we have a number of grants, one that Antonina just mentioned, the Forester Grant, which is going to bring five thousand dollars of trees into the playground to keep things cooler, it's very hot out there right now. And when I was there just about an hour ago, parents were clustered in one of the edges right under the trees that were there, we didn't have enough trees. In a couple of years, those trees that we'll be planting, uh, this fall will be big enough to allow us to have a lot more shade in that general area. They'll also, we hope, soak up a lot of the extra rainwater that happens around the playground, so they'll do a dual, uh, thing and hopefully they'll look beautiful, so they will have that as well. We had a, um, a grant that we, uh, were just included in on, thanks to Councilman Madoway, the Delaware two hundred and fifty grant, this is a fantastic grant because, uh, the state and I, I guess maybe the national, uh, it's on the national level is giving money away to celebrate our two hundred and fiftieth birthday as a country. And so we will be, um, putting in an application for benches so that we have places to sit around the playground, but those benches will be unique because they'll have integrated into them QR codes which will link to historical facts about the city and where there's talk of doing, um, some kind of, uh, scavenger hunt so that kids can go through or adults can go through and learn all about Newcastle, those QR codes, because their digital can be swapped in and out, uh, over the, over the year and so there can be continual learning and understanding about how special Newcastle is. So thank you to, um, all of our, um, city council, thank you to our mayor for our, her letter of support for the Delaware two hundred and fiftieth and more good things to come with the Centene Grant, we hope, Longwood Foundation, Black and Q and the ORTP Grant.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just add one more clarification, this is something you just mentioned, um, it was a joint collaborative effort, um, and it could not have, the application could not have been submitted, um, without the expertise of Mike Conley and the Newcastle Historic Society that, um, is also, uh, working on and going, I wanted to, next man.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, council. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody hears me. Uh, my name is Josie Roy and, um, I don't know who, the ages of people in here, but I'm seventy-eight years old and I was born and raised here in Old Newcastle. So tonight I'm coming to the city, the council, to ask about Mount Salem United Methodist Church on East Fourth Street, which was my family church where I grew up in and also I probably have been in a lot of the houses that you live in now because I was born and raised here in Old Newcastle. So I, I was the one that was instrumental in getting the historical marker at our church. I frequently go by to see how things is going and I know how things is going, but it doesn't look too cool to me. And, uh, I went by yesterday and, uh, I figured this is where I needed to come because that tree that is sitting in the front of the church, the limbs are very, uh, they're hanging over that marker, you can, can't even hardly see the marker and I'm quite sure, um, those markers belong to the state of Delaware, am I correct, if anybody knows the historical markers?
They don't, you put it up.
But, yes, but before it gets damaged anymore because of the tree limbs that I saw yesterday that's hanging over, I'm asking the city, uh, would you please have, uh, someone, whoever, to cut those tree limbs so that historical marker is not damaged any, anymore? Um, I don't know where yous are with the church, um, I'm very instrumental in speaking with Mr. Westbrook, I'm quite sure some of y'all have heard his name and have talked to Mr. Westbrook. So I always get calls when there's something going on with the church, uh, because I was the one, uh, that like I say, instrumental in getting the marker and having, uh, the church renovated at the time when we did have it renovated and now it's at the point where I don't know what's gonna happen, I, I don't know where the city is with it and I don't know where yous are at the conference level with it, but I do request and asking that you would kindly cut them limbs, uh, off the church.
Let me ask you a question, is that tree, like, right by the sidewalk?
No, it's right in front of the church.
Okay, because if it's a-
Yeah, it's on the sidewalk, yeah.
If it's a street tree, there's an application for us, uh, with the Tree Advisory Commission to request the tree.
Uh-huh.
So if you go into the city office, you can fill out a form and it goes to the Tree Advisory Commission and they would have done their list of trees that need work and assess how urgent it is and then they, um, look into having that done with, from their funding. So that would be your step is to fill out one of those forms.
And so your suggestion, I go and-
Yes, you were whoever's often finds the church to-
Right, okay.
Ms. Roy, I think I'll take your email address at the end of, uh, the meeting, say the one I'll, I'll reach out to you, I'm trying to copy and I'll help, please on that form for you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for listening.
My name is Dennis Young from twelve West Fifth Street and, uh, I have one quick issue to bring up, but before that I want to add my voice, uh, congratulations to the city, to the town for the receipt of the Best of Delaware Award for Battery Park as the best place to picnic in Delaware. To that I want to add that there's another Best of Delaware Award that was granted to Mozart Gallery as the best gallery in upstate Delaware. So, um, I'm grateful and appreciative about that and thank you for every of you who voted for that. For those who didn't, you know, welcome to many of my party. Uh, my issue and, and there may be easy solutions to this, I just haven't seen it. The, um, the problem about the, uh, street sweeping, uh, where the automobiles must be removed from the street between, I think, seven and three, thereabouts, are the designated days that the street will be swept, uh, otherwise there's, um, a, I understand a fifty-three dollar fine will be incurred. The issue is what about, what happens when I or other residents are out of town, out of state, out of country for a period of, uh, a couple of weeks that would, where the street cleaning, uh, would fall during that time of absence? I have, I have a, uh, a security camera that scans my, uh, in front of my yard and in front of the street and my automobiles for which I pay a, um, a monthly, uh, fee. So, uh, for the time that I would be out of the country, what do I do with my car? Um, and if I park it elsewhere, finding those spots to park it, I'm losing that protection, potential protection I have with the, uh, security camera watching my car, so if anyone has a solution to that or what I can do about it, I appreciate hearing about that as, as would others. So thank you. Appreciate you.
Anyone else?
First I'd like to, uh, dovetail with, uh, Councilman Zell on the Meals on Wheels, I had done it for a bunch of years, uh, and a lot of the people that are the recipients, that's the only contact that they have with another human being, uh, so it's really heartbreaking but, uh, very rewarding internally, uh, if you can make a couple hours a month, you know, even once a month, do it, uh, but it's well worth, um, worth it to the people that are the recipients. Uh, second, uh, I'm not sure whether it's the city or the trustees, but we need to get the picnic benches and benches in the park that are sitting there stacked up, back in the park now. We're, we're in July, we shouldn't be in July and not have these, uh, things, especially with our award-winning Battery Park. It's nice if we got a grant, but why haven't the existing ones been put out? They're in good order. Uh, so that's another thing that I would, um, recommend the trustees and the city get together on that. Uh, as far as bike rack, all for it, we're moving along with, uh, getting more people into the city and less cars, which is good, uh, but dovetailing with that, there is not a chance on this earth that we should take a parking spot, we just built a lot, paid a ton of money, um, indirectly we paid, uh, for the lot, uh, so I really think it's great, do it on the lawn by the library, find a couple other spots that are off-street. Um, I, I guess when it comes to the budget, all, all, all that was done was debt that we had from the last budget was not resolved going into this budget, it was added to it. There's not any reason why that shouldn't have been taken care of before kicking the financial issues down the street so that we get a whopping, whopping, uh, tax increase on the twenty-five, uh, twenty twenty-five. Um, I, I just think every, every group, every organization that wanted money put their hands out and it was approved. I attended the meetings, I saw it. Uh, so again, I think it was just really careless, uh, in passing that budget as it was. Um, I, I think also with- I think also with projects being approved, there's a lot of secret ones that are approved. And these committees are approving more building projects.
Mr. Chris, I'll just point out that our treasurer just reported that we had a surplus last year. So.
Wonder where in a week that money came from?
Good evening. My name is Florence Smith. I just want to know, they said you have to move your car on a certain day, but nobody said any time. Is that all day?
The time on the signs is seven to three because they can't predict exactly when the sweeper's going to come down your street.
So seven to three, no cars on?
First, on one side, on Wednesdays, then on Thursdays, on the other side.
Gonna be a lot of problem for my neighborhood.
Anyone else?
David Collin. Used to live at 725 Plomer Street. Been forced into the streets. I've been homeless for about a year now. Before that, I was sleeping on my floor by my front door with my head against it for about a year and a half. Surrounded by smoke detectors and fire extinguishers. What you'll find in the package is evidence of a lot of doing that. I'm not a intern, but I have trained in discussion murder for going very long time, very long time. Probably 90,000 hours, 40-plus years. My professional opinion is that your employees have created a supersized fire bomb with a flamethrower on top that attaches to my house. But there's a much worse flamethrower on 741 Center Street. It is massive. And it is, it would take the entire block out faster than one attaching to my house. So I give you this. You take a look at it. I am not set in stone with any of my opinions. Nothing, all right? It goes to our religion, too. There's something workable. We do it. You chuck what doesn't work, you use what does work. So if you can prove to me, my assessment of what's going on here and your employees and what they have done to me, which is about $600,000 plus and the financial damage still continues altogether in the past two and a half years, yeah. Wake up, Jeffrey. Please explain to me how my assessment of the situation is incorrect. And I'll stop bothering because I don't want to be here, okay? I think that's fair. So you need to contact Attorney General's Office, get their arson investigation unit involved, get the state fire marshal involved, their arson investigation unit. Come out there, take a look at what I got ready to, I just gave it to you. In writing. There's a lot of people's lives at stake. A lot, two entire city blocks are set up that can burn to the ground by so-called professionals. So I get tired of coming here. And I want my house back. I want my house back. Everybody stand up. I want my house back. You have a nice night.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Dave Aldini and I'm at 419 South Street. And I've listened to you tonight about the bicycle racks and the pilot program and all the good things that you have expectations with. My suggestion is that you talk to the folks with the Historical Area Commission because I think they have a program plan that's slightly off your agenda. In fact, they don't like, they don't want to see bicycle racks. They don't want to see bikes. At least in meeting, I said. It's like a number one. Like a number two is you've had that, that, what do I want to say? That article in the Weekly here about the bicycle rack and that visionary that you have hired, John Reeve, I think? The guy that doesn't color in the lines and ignorant and, well, the comments were somewhat inflammatory, somewhat insulting. I take exception to it and I don't even give a damn about the bicycle racks. But this commentary has got to stop. Item one. Item two is you got to have a conversation because if the council is going left and the commission is going right and your commissioners are out there writing this inflammatory speech, which also has to be fact-checked because Code 28.1 was originally written and you can correctly follow on for the Third Street parking lot, Upper Side. That's not when we wrote that, that code, 28.1, for parking, was the parking lot. And it was originally intended for motor vehicles, not bicycles, as the article suggested. So what I'm suggesting here to council tonight, please, is have that conversation, get on the same page with the commission. Or maybe it should be the other way around. Depends on whose hammer is bigger. Thank you.
I'll just point out that that article was signed just with the person's name, not with their title.
I'm sorry.
I understand your point.
I'm sorry.
But I think it was done as a private individual.
No.
Not as a veteran.
No, you cannot do that. It's like knighthood. When you're given that mantle, life as you know it ceases to exist. They are commissioners, period. I'm a trustee, like it or not, period. You are council people.
To the best of my knowledge, that article was not approved by the entire pack.
Believe me, I would be hostile if I was there.
Okay. I don't want to start a long conversation. I just want to throw that out.
Of course not. But you got to start the conversation with that.
I meant here. Okay. Anybody else have comments to add? Okay, now we can go. All right, we have the second reading of Ordinance 547, which we may do by title since I got the entire thing when it was introduced. And this is an ordinance to amend the City of Newcastle Code, Chapter 193, the Sanitary Code, Article 2, regarding the composition of the Board of Health. And then the next item on the agenda is discussion and vote from council on this item. So any comments from council or conversation about Ordinance 547?
I think it's good that the Board of Health brought it forward to us. And I don't have any other comments other than that. Appreciate their bringing it forward.
Anyone else?
I've attended some of the Board of Health meetings. I know this is something that they've been tolerating over for a while. I too appreciate the thoughtfulness to ensure that they continue to be resourceful to the cities and for our residents. Well, I'll say that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 547?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
It's an ordinance. We have to have a roll call. Who's here?
I. Mr. Zabaka.
Actually, Mr. Zabaka. He can't move.
Okay. City Council President Suzanne Satter.
Yes.
Councilperson Joseph Day.
Yes.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Yes.
Councilperson Brian Madoway.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item is a resolution to approve the appointee's appointment of Stephen Franklin to the Planning Commission. And I will read this up. Resolution 2024-24. Whereas the Newcastle City Code provides that the mayor shall appoint members of the Planning Commission for three-year terms, and whereas there is currently a vacancy on the Planning Commission, and whereas the mayor has appointed Stephen Franklin to fill this position, now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby approves the appointment of Stephen Franklin to the Planning Commission with the term ending September 11, 2027. I have two comments on this. First, Mr. Franklin couldn't be with us tonight, but he did send the biography, which all members of council have in their packet. I'll just say briefly, he's been a school, public school educator for 25 years. Had taught middle school before becoming a high school administrator. And then he retired after four years as a high school principal. He then moved to Newcastle. He served as the graduate coordinator for Delaware State University's international masters and doctoral programs from 2020 to 2023. He's in his second term on investment in the Manuel N. Green Church. And he will be appointed tonight, actually, to the Newcastle Historical Society's board. He has two master's degrees and a doctor of education from Cal State University. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Do I have a motion to approve this appointment? Do I have a second? Oh, sure.
Go ahead, second. Go ahead. No, you can't go there.
I just wanted to try and, I want to thank Mr. Franklin for, you know, accepting the nomination of the joint committee. So that's, you know, it's always hard to buy people that are well concerned on the big stuff.
Thank you. All right, I had a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved. And then the final item, well, the next item for tonight is the council resolution discussion and possible vote on Ordinance 2024-25, which I will read. And then Mr. Rogers, I assume you're here to explain. Okay. Resolution 2024-25, a resolution approving a subdivision plan prepared for John W. Cochran and Marilyn J. Cochran for property known as 805, 807, and 809 Washington Street. Whereas John W. Cochran and Marilyn J. Cochran have applied to the Council of Newcastle for a subdivision plan approval for properties known as tax parcels number, tax parcel numbers 21-014.00-240 and 21-014.00-241 within the city limits. And whereas the building official has reviewed the application under the terms of subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances and has determined that the application is in conformity with the saying and has therefore recommended to the city council that the subdivision plan be approved as a re-subdivision as defined by the subdivision regulations. And whereas the council determines the application meets the requirements necessary for the approval of a re-subdivision as shown on the attached Exhibit A, which is a map given to all of us. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of John W. Cochran and Marilyn J. Cochran for approval of the subdivision plan for 805, 807, and 809 Washington Street, parcels 21-014.00-240 and 21-014.00-241 within the city limits as shown hereby on a plat prepared by Mayor Stone Consultants Incorporated dated April 23, 2024 and attached here too as Exhibit A reflecting such subdivisions is approved. And such plat shall be entitled to be recorded in the office of the Newcastle County Recorder of Deeds. The subdivider shall record the subject plan within 45 days of the date of this resolution and inform the building official of the exact place of recordingation within that office. Then to record the subject plan within the aforementioned timeframe shall render this resolution null and void. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, thank you, President, members of council. What you have in front of you is a resolution to approve a re-subdivision. The nature of the re-subdivision plan is to bind the two parcels that were identified in the resolution. The only thing that's occurring as a result of this re-subdivision is the elimination of one lot line. The purpose of the plan note describes succinctly what the purpose of the plan is, what we look for. So this was a re-subdivision as defined by your subdivision regulations. It was not reviewed by the Planning Commission. Your subdivision regulations allow re-subdivisions to be reviewed and approved administratively because there's no new development potential that's occurring or being created as a result of this plan. What we look for is to make sure that the re-subdivision does not create any non-conformities or violations of your zoning ordinance. And none of that is occurring here. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are any other neighboring properties impacted by this?
No. All that is occurring is the elimination of an existing lot line that happens to be a common wall between two attached dwellings.
Okay, so the third-party wall on the attached dwelling is actually where the property is currently located?
Yes.
I got it.
So now, by definition, it would be a two-family dwelling, which is permitted in this zone. Before, it was two attached dwellings. Your code's got to have funny definitions. But it's not two semi-attached dwellings. But now it's two dwellings on one lot, which is permitted in the arbitrary zone.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
A motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The final item tonight was an appointment, an approval of a Board of Adjustment appointment. We have a probable candidate, but the candidate asked that we defer this to August. So we'd like to have an actual appointment to bring forward next month.
Who is it?
That'll be part of the announcement for next month.
So you will not have to be approved?
No, no, we're not approving it tonight. It'll be announced when it goes on the agenda for next month's meeting. That being said, if we're finished, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.